I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. Madam Clerk, we please call the roll and reestablish your quorum.
Sure. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Great, thank you.
So, we are going to go to item 13, which was held from this morning. This is to authorize the execution of lease agreement number 1864 for the Sacramento Public Library Authority at 8820 Greenback Lane. The environmental document is exempt.
Supervisor Frost?
I'm going to ask that we continue this to January, please.
Okay. Chair will second. Do you have to have a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you.
Okay, so for item 59, this is the Dry Creek Road and Loop Road General Plan Amendment. It's a general plan amendment to downgrade Dry Creek Road and Loop Road from four-lane arterials to a local road consistent with the Elverta specific plan. The environmental determination is an addendum to prior final environmental impact report.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, Planning Director, here to give the staff presentation. And before I start, I just did want to note that this item and the next item are part of a general plan round, so you will be adopting a single resolution at the end of both. So we'll go through this item, you can take action on the sequoque document, and then we'll have you hold final approval. All right, so the location here is Dry Creek Road from U Street to Loop and Loop Road from 16th Street to Elverta. This is in the Elverta community, and these roads are also within the already adopted Elverta specific plan. The request is a general plan amendment to downgrade Dry Creek Road and Loop Road from a four-lane arterial to a loop road. And essentially what happened here is when the specific plan went through in around, I think it was 2008 or so, a decision was made that a couple of these roads would be built ultimately as two-lane local roads rather than four-lane larger arterials. However, in the final specific plan adoption, the general plan wasn't reconciled appropriately and didn't match the adopted specific plan. So that was noted more recently as we're processing some of the maps, and this cleans up that discrepancy. So this is a diagram of the existing general plan designations with a couple of those roads shown in blue in the center of the map. And after today's adoption, you can see that little small segment of Dry Creek Road and the small segment of Loop Road disappear from the general plan map. The blue goes away, allowing them to be two-lane local roads instead of four-lane arterials. The Community Planning Advisory Council recommends approval on a five-to-zero vote. Staff recommends approval relying on the Environmental Coordinator's addendum dated August 5th, 2019, determining the prior EIR to be adequate and appropriate. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, so that's the entirety of the staff presentation for item 59?
Yes.
Okay, and so we need to act just once, though, on 5960?
Yes, you can take the first recommended staff action, which is recognizing the addendum right now, and then defer the second action in the board report.
Okay, any questions of staff? I don't have anyone sign up to speak on item 59.
Yeah, I have no questions answered.
Okay, entertain a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay.
Item 60, adopt the Phase Two Environmental Justice General Plan Amendment package, and the environmental determination is exempt.
Well, while the PowerPoint's getting loaded, my name's Todd Smith, Principal Planner in the Long Range and Master Plans Section. I want to thank the board for taking the time on this item today. I have the honor of presenting the item, but I want to acknowledge those who have participated in this process over the last 18 months or so. That includes members of the Environmental Justice Advisory Committee, which contained representatives from the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, WAC Sacramento, Sacramento Food Policy Council, the Community Resource Project, and staff from the Department of Public Health. All of those folks played a role in shaping this into what it is presented here today. So, we'll get right into it. SB 1000 was a law passed in 2016, and essentially it requires cities and counties that have disadvantaged communities to identify objectives and policies in their general plans that address or reduce unique or compounded health risks, increase civic or civil engagement in public decision-making, and to prioritize programs and public improvements. The main feature, or a main feature of this Phase Two EJ element is a comparison of disadvantaged areas with non-disadvantaged areas. We also address geographic and procedural inequities as part of this element. And again, I want to reiterate the unique, a focus on the unique or compounded health risks in the disadvantaged areas. So as part of this process, I want to do a quick refresher. We did identify four environmental justice communities within the county. They are North Highlands, Foothill Farms, North Vineyard, South Sacramento, and West Arden Arcade, shown there in the graphic on the right of the slide. And we covered the topical areas of prioritizing improvements and programs for EJ communities, reducing pollution exposure and improving air quality, promoting public facilities, healthy food access, safe and sanitary homes, physical activity, crime prevention, and promoting civil engagement. We've done this in two phases. The first phase consisted of baseline research and identifying existing policies in the general plan that speak to some of these topics that I mentioned in the previous slide. We did very limited policy development other than identifying those existing policies in Phase One, and that was adopted by the board in May of 2018. Immediately after that, we kicked off Phase Two, where we had extensive public engagement. We did additional baseline research with the help of the Environmental Justice Advisory Committee. We worked on additional policy development and some modification to those proposed policies that I'll get into in a second. And our goal, which is why we're here today, is approval by the board. As part of this effort, we did extensive public outreach. Attachment five in your board package contains a more detailed listing, but I'll summarize it here. Staff participated in seven community events where we essentially put a pop-up shade structure and had staff engaging with community members to identify what those things were that community members identified as needed or desired in their communities. We also did four community workshops in the EJ communities. We also participated in numerous meetings with community and special interest groups. I think I tallied about 17 of those meetings. We put out a web survey for a period of two months where we received 719 responses, and we also extended that survey to some community-based organizations to conduct their own independent surveys to help gather additional data from the communities. We've got a GovDelivery subscription topic. This is one of the mechanisms that the county uses to disseminate information, to identify when community events are going on. At the time we published this, we had 1,617 subscribers. We are now up to 1,728. So it's a big jump. And finally, we, when we started going through the CPAC hearing process back in August, we published the fruits of all this effort, which was a public review draft, Phase Two EJ element. That was publicly available for review and comment from August 2nd through November 15th of this year. One of the things that we feel is most important to the success, excuse me, the success of this EJ element is implementation. We've had a number of conversations internally about the best way to do this, and frankly, what we see is a need to embed this thought process of environmental justice into the county's regular practices and processes. This affects how we engage with the people we serve and how we prioritize those programs and improvements in the communities. We see a need for an annual stakeholder meeting, continued community engagement. This would ideally be occurring at the beginning of each calendar year, where staff would engage with community members, community-based organizations, all the stakeholders who have an interest, to identify what their priorities are in their community, what they need. That would be reported back internally to an executive-level working group with various department heads who have a role to play in implementation of these policies and objectives. Obviously, our long-range planning staff has a role as well, so we have some responsibility to implement the general plan. All of these culminate in an annual report card on implementation. You're familiar with the annual report that we do on the general plan in the spring of each year. We see this annual report card being a component of that. And the annual report would also demonstrate the effectiveness of these policies and implementation measures, as well as identify potential new priorities on an annual basis. Moving forward into CPAC review, we took this Phase Two Environmental Justice element to the five CPACs that you see on the slide here. All but one recommended approval, and the one that was recommended for denial in Carmichael, the reason for their recommendation for denial was a desire to see more specific policies and implementation measures that would potentially limit how we interpret or identify priorities for action. They weren't necessarily opposed to the element itself, they just wanted to see more specificity. At the Planning Commission back in October, there was unanimous recommendation for approval to the board. And I do want to clarify one misstatement in the board letter. I think we characterized the testimony from Sacramento area congregations together as supportive of the fresh produce in convenience stores. SAC Act has not taken a position on that. That was a mistake on our part, so I just want to let the record reflect that. So finally, the recommendation today is recognition of the exempt status of this request for sequoque purposes, and then adoption of the attached resolution, which amends the general plan to include the Phase Two EJ element, the supporting research document, as well as the multiple changes in the other elements of the general plan, subject to the findings in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Before we get to public testimony, I see that Supervisor Peters has a question.
Thanks, Todd. In the CPAC voting results, you mentioned, you talked about Carmichael and the denial. Arden Arcade was an approval, but it was very close, four to three. So what was the dissent there about?
The concern there, it was a very robust discussion. Some members felt that some of these policies had an anti-business sentiment to them. Staff's position is that they do not. There's nothing in here, from our perspective, that would disincentivize business or development or investment in the community. We see it as an opportunity to improve some areas in the community.
Did any owners of the small markets testify at CPAC? I mean, I'm wondering where somebody buys carrots and lettuce, are they going to go to Save Mart and buy the vegetables and then bring them back into their store? I mean, because they can't buy in any quantity. For instance, that's...
That's a good example. No, at the Arden Arcade CPAC, there weren't any small business or small convenience store owners in attendance or that I recall at any of the CPACs.
So nobody talked about how they would...
Correct.
These markets could possibly, could get to these fresh fruits and vegetables without buying them for retail?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Todd, I trust the planning department has been in receipt of some of the comments coming in via the Board of Supervisors portal site.
That's correct.
And I know we're going to get, you know, verbal comments today. We've had, you know, a couple of pieces of correspondence, but there were comments submitted by President Betty Williams of the Greater Sacramento NAACP relative certainly to the environmental justice element. They're supporting the adoption of the Phase Two element, but they also raised some issues in their correspondence as relates to the crime prevention through environmental design, referred to in short as SEPTED principles. If you had a chance, this just came in this morning, I don't know if you've had a chance, and maybe that came up in the course of some of the outreach that was done that you, you know, identified in your overview of this, but I, you know, there are any number of points here that certainly, I guess the essence of it being, though, that some of those, by design, in the built environment, could actually, you know, I think in their words, be exclusionary to others in the community. And I guess I'm just curious about whether that's something that, you know, either is planning staff or in consultation with others that have been working on the element, has that come up? Has there been discussions? And they go through in quite a bit of detail, so I'm not going to, there's a letter obviously here to comment on some of the text in the document, but...
So, this communication this morning was the first time that staff has seen this.
Okay.
It has not, this level of detail has not come up as part of our discussions over the last 18 months. From staff's perspective, we do not disagree with some of their suggested edits. For example, SEPTED being an avenue to enhance residents' quality of life, absolutely. I am not personally knowledgeable about some of these details that they're speaking about that are identified as being adopted and implemented in the Greater Sacramento County.
Right.
I'm pretty sure our design guidelines don't speak to some of these details.
No, I know the design guidelines don't, but I think some of the physical improvements might very well, because by design, I think some are designed to address certain activities that may be of a nuisance and/or a criminal nature, but nonetheless, I mean, you know, they raise these points. I just was curious, because again, they go through in quite a bit of detail, they're not all from a planning perspective. Some relate to a policy framework for elected bodies and others who would carry out certain, you know, ordinances and so forth. But, so how does this get rolled into, because even though it was received just this morning, we're having a hearing here today, certainly in my review of the documentation and some of the, you know, meetings and discussions I've had, didn't go to this level of detail, nor did it raise some of the issues here. And whether one agrees or disagrees with them, they're certainly worth considering. So how does this get, I guess, rolled into today's conversation besides the fact that we've received it, we may talk about it, ask you a question or two, but because it's, I guess, kind of late, but it's not too late. So that's my point.
Sure.
So how would this get addressed? Because again, some of these things are already in effect, others may not be, but if we're going to cement them in a general plan element with the environmental justice element, that's... Go ahead.
So there's two schools of thought in my head. One is, the context that we're talking about is the general plan element that typically a general plan does not go into this level of detail, that subsequent detail could be captured in, for example, the zoning code or design guidelines as part of an implementation. And frankly, this is one of the challenges that we've struggled with as we've gone through this process, a desire to see more detail, but trying to keep it within the context of a policy framework in the general plan, where we have subsequent opportunities, whether it's strictly land use or planning-related, or other departments, or within the county that might have some responsibility. So I think if we focus on the desired outcome, which I think we can generally get from this comment letter from NAACP, that would help inform how we implement over time, and maybe we can tackle some of these points.
More discrete issues, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps. The other thing I wanted to just ask about, because I think it's certainly in reference to, you know, the work that you did on the ground, both in the pop-up events, but certainly in the community outreach and having an open survey on the website and such. And again, in my conversations in the last week or two with folks, you know, as it goes to implementation, obviously there's, you know, certainly interest, and we'll hear from folks about that today, about how it gets implemented, what gets implemented. But I think the ongoing piece that I wanted to ask about, I guess, how it gets built into, you know, moving forward, is that this participation, which again, you know, was a fairly extensive effort, where does funding lie for that? Where does support for that? Because again, I got to imagine that as you, one, begin to do measures regarding how we're doing, you've got this aligned with, I guess, the planning period being the 10-year, over 10-year period, but there's going to need to be some measures, I think, you know, evolve over time, to your point, and respond to my last question. What's the plan for that? Again, you don't control all of that, but I guess I'm curious, is, you know, what's your thoughts about that?
So my initial thought, and we kind of summarized this in the board report, is that implementation will be challenging. There's no question about that. It will take a change in how we, as a county, deal with community engagement, identifying priorities, setting priorities, and carrying through. We're seeing, just in the planning world, a whole host of new grant opportunities opening up at the state level that really hit on housing, climate change, and EJ. In fact, we were able to get one of those in one of our EJ communities that we're starting to implement now. So to the extent that we can go after those outside funding sources, that helps us implement. Some of those programs also don't require a local jurisdiction to be the sponsor, so to speak. They are available to community-based organizations, and we can't do this as staff alone. It will take partnerships with those organizations and those folks on the ground in each of these communities. So we see implementation being a multi-pronged approach. Again, not just staff saying this is what we're doing, but first seeking what is the most desirable priority in each community on an annual basis.
Yeah, I just, as a final comment at this point, that I think that that linkage with your community-based organization is going to be essential to, you know, I think, you know, robust implementation, but certainly I think the ability to reach folks, to see, you know, not only take the temperature from time to time, but also to know better, where and even organizationally, if they're reading the community, they're not going to know the entirety of the community in the sense of big geography that's in the unincorporated area, and certainly the areas that are described geographically here in the plan. But I think that's going to be, you know, a really important piece, and I guess I would just suggest that, I think, certainly within our human services, social services network, we, you know, had longstanding partnerships, bless you, with, you know, with folks that, you know, helped organize the community, but also deliver your services, to help us develop and implement programs. And I think looking at some of those models, if, I trust you're aware of them, and probably others in the planning department, but I would say that, you know, with some seed money and, you know, good outreach, that it helps get beyond just having a community meeting or a pop-up event, you know, because you're only going to capture a certain sense of the community from those that you encounter there, and it may be a correct one or not. But I do think that, you know, being able to, you know, get deeper into the community through those who reflect the community makeup, you know, whether it be ethically, socioeconomically, culturally, whatever it may be, that it's going to be important, I think, to, you know, to build those partnerships and recognizing there may be funding opportunities, but I think they're going to be key and critical to a county as diverse as this, but one that, you know, we hope to see neighborhoods and certainly communities throughout thrive and prosper, and, you know, recognize the identity of those communities and, you know, the contributions to the, you know, to the quality of life here in our county as a whole. So I guess I would just, you know, encourage us to, you know, and not just you as the current lead on this, but others, to, you know, really begin to, you know, look at how we can, you know, and again, it may be a slow process, a slower walk to begin with, but I think, you know, that will help strengthen our community, but also it strengthens that relationship between the electeds and those policymakers, and certainly those that are professional planners and others in implementing this. I think it just, it serves, you know, multiple purposes in a positive way. So again, I'm sure you've had some ideas, and some of it will require money, but not always, and I just think that's going to be really important to keep those threads into the community and make them, you know, good strong lines of communication, but also of exchange of information and to help carry out implementation, because some of this is going to be done at the community level. We can pass out ordinances and resolutions here and provide incentives or disincentives, as it may be, but it's still going to lie within the framework of the communities a lot of times to see to it that really, you know, that they're done in a way that I think reflects, you know, good use of people's time, but also gives the opportunities if you're looking for it under the environmental justice umbrella. So I just, but I compliment the work here. I know it's been, you know, been a while coming, but I would just encourage those community partnerships. Thanks.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions myself, Todd.
Sure.
First, I want to thank you and all the staff for working so diligently on this important addition to our general plan, which, as many know, functions as our constitution for many things, not the least of which is how we grow and develop in Sacramento County and really is the cornerstone of all the planning documents that we work with and that the public counts on to help guide us from a policy standpoint when it comes to make an important land use, transportation, and now environmental justice decisions. One of the questions I had was, had to do more with some of the language used in the document, and I don't know if it's a function of the legislation that introduces the requirement for local jurisdictions, municipalities, and counties to have an environmental justice element in the general plan, but there's sprinkled throughout, especially the introduction section, there's this reference to environmental hazards. And I'm not sure why the term environmental hazards, which I think most people can understand what an environmental hazard is, why is that specific term used versus something like environmental conditions? Is there a legislative, is it in statute that that's kind of the subject matter of the element versus environmental conditions, which is kind of a broader catch-all in my estimation?
I think part of it is identifying, so the multifaceted components of EJ. When we're talking about pollution exposure, for example, we, as a planner or environmental analyst, we tend to think of things as pollution related from an exposure to a hazard, environmental hazard. That's probably the lens that we put on it, just as a matter of practice. It's an interesting point that you raised, though, about shifting our perspective. That's good feedback to have. I don't think there's necessarily a direct link to the statute, if that's your concern.
Probably a difference with some distinction, kind of a thing, but to me, you know, hazard is putting somewhat of a finer point on there being some very real, and again, not to diminish the fact that there are some very real health hazards, but that's what comes to my mind, is when the term hazard is used, is that we're always thinking, and in this case, planning, in the context of what is hazardous to the public's health, and certainly that's part of it. But I think a lot of this is also really speaking to the conditions that tend to plague disadvantaged communities and that aren't necessarily health hazards. I mean, it could be something as, you know, seemingly benign as graffiti versus pollutants, versus criteria pollutants in the air, for instance.
There's the more technical side versus the softer science side, yeah.
And I'm not suggesting that we spend all the afternoon wordsmithing this one-inch document, but I just wanted to get some clarity on that. And then the other, the other question I had, again, kind of in the realm of verbiage, is procedural inequities. I've seen that term used pretty liberally here, too. Can you explain what procedural inequities are?
Sure. A procedural inequity in the way we've tried to think about this is, I think Supervisor Natoli alluded to it a little bit, although maybe not knowingly. When we have our community meetings, for example, our... When we have our community meetings, for example, our CPAC meetings are held, for example, at a specified time in the evening, or even the planning commission, specified time, regular time, when some members of the community, due to circumstances beyond their control, are not able to attend, whether there's socioeconomic issues, say, the single parent working two jobs, that, those types of issues are presenting a barrier to public engagement. So that's a procedural inequity, which may lend itself to not having a complete set of information to the decision-makers.
Okay. I mean, it seems like it's going to be one of those terms that after perhaps years of having a environmental justice element, and it becomes much more the kind of vernacular lexicon of, you know, the public and the planning community, and certainly elected decision-makers, it becomes something that is easily inferred, but I just wanted to get some clarification on that before we acted today. Okay, so I know the, thank you, Todd. I know the public's been patient. I don't see anyone else from the board queued to ask questions or make statements at this point, so we are going to hear from the public. Again, I would ask those that have submitted speaker slips to please keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and that's in place so that everyone has a chance to address the board if they so choose, and we will start with Paul Philly.
Good afternoon, Chair Serna, members of the board. I am Paul Philly with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District. For the past two years, the Air District has been supporting the county and its staff in putting together the Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental justice element for your general plan. At the same time, the state gave us a mandate as well, and we've been working on the Community Air Protection Program, and like you, we are early out of the gate in a lot of lessons learned and reaching to our different communities. And so we've been focusing on improving air quality at the community level in historically disadvantaged communities that traditionally have often had a larger portion of the burden of air quality. As we're currently tracking air quality at a finer geographic scale in the community of South Sacramento and Florin, which is also one of your environmental justice communities, we want to commit that we're going to continue to work with your staff so that as that information becomes available, we can work to amend land use plans, funding plans, and the way we do business so that we can better address the issues that we continue to find in these areas. We really want to see continued collaboration between our agencies and our community partners as we move forward, because that's what's going to make this basically a successful effort, we hope. So thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you. Adrian Ren.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Serna and members of the board. My name is Adrian Ren. I'm an Oak Park resident. I'm also a member of the Steering Committee of the Sacramento Food Policy Council. Since 2014, SFPC, as we're known, has been at the forefront of advancing urban ag in our communities, as well as being creative in leveraging public arts funds to spread and boost CalFresh awareness. We've also been, of course, engaged with the EJAC throughout this process. And on behalf of the SFPC today, I am here to urge you to adopt the Phase 2 environmental justice element and to look forward to, and we, of course, look forward to working with you to ensure that there is meaningful community engagement throughout that process, and ultimately to strengthen execution and impact. Our recommendations include more formal and inclusive community oversight, stronger implementation measures, and pathways to economic development opportunities for county residents. So again, we look forward to continued collaboration to ensure an accessible and strong food system here in America's farm-to-fort capital. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Adrian. Michael Harris. Following Mr. Harris will be Matthew Bridges.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It is wonderful to be here at the end of this special year, celebrating the holy days, you know, Hanukkah starts, I believe, Friday, and then Christmas, and then Kwanzaa. But if you go back 170 years, when, you know, this was transferred from Mexico to the United States, there was environmental justice, and William Leidestorf, in his Mexican land grant, said, hey, look, we're going to take care of the Native American here. And so on this land, we say all of our relations, and for thousands of years, you know, environmental justice was at the seat at the very beginning of all the discussions. So I'm very supportive of this. I mean, this is like, almost like ancient future, going back to where we were, to where we're going to go. I mean, in our conversations, we're going to look at how we're going to take care of maybe the ant, maybe the bee, in environmental justice. I mean, it's very important. So the $330 billion that's just been quantified by the California working landscape, and we say we're the farm-to-fort capital, that's not true, if you look at the data, we are the capital of the California landscape, $330 billion, but we are woefully negligent in looking at how we engage our community to be what it was, you know, in the beginning. You know, the fish, the canneries that are in Monterey, they, the fish came from here, you know, the salmon, and all throughout the watershed that we maintain custody of. When we look at the opportunities to marry agriculture and environmental justice, to create jobs, there's only 1.5 million jobs in the California landscape, only, 1.5 million jobs. But the last time I looked at it, and I need to look at the 60 pages, a little detailed, trying to remember what Glenda Humble was telling me, I think we're number four in the regions of Sacramento, I mean, in the California-Sacramento region, the farm-to-fort capital. So we probably should change the A, you know, looking at the money, because we're nowhere close, and say, hey, look, we're just the capital with O, because we have the building down the street, the state capital, and look at how we can create urban agriculture as the hub for this region. And I say that because I can go back to 2002, my email is urbanagriculture@gmail, because USDA said there will be no urban agriculture in the urban service boundary. And I said, well, you probably have told the wrong person, so we're just going to fight and make this happen. And so today is real. So in the town, the region where I was born, we have an opportunity, a real opportunity, not just to speak with the NAACP, but actually engage with them year-round to create jobs in this community, so we won't have to spend a lot of money in the child legacy campaign after the fact. We could spend it ahead of the fact. So I'll stop there. Happy holidays. I love you. Holidays to you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Okay, Matthew Bridges. Following Mr. Bridges, and forgive me, is it Brenda Ruiz?
All right, good afternoon. My name is Matthew Bridges. I'm with the Sacramento Food Policy Council. So I wanted to say thank you for hearing this agenda item today, for hearing our comments. And I want to reiterate that the most successful planning processes have really strong leadership, you know, especially when you're talking about environmental justice planning processes, they have really strong leadership and engagement from impacted communities. So thank you Supervisor Natoli for uplifting that, that need to really look at ways that we can more formally engage with communities that are being impacted, and have them guide the priorities going forward. So it seems like, you know, right now, at least in Sacramento, we're not at that level where we have a strong, you know, community leadership contingent, at least, to guide this process, specifically around environmental justice. We've seen that in other initiatives here in Sacramento County, but we're not there yet with environmental justice. And I think part of the reason for that is lacking, you know, some of the infrastructure and resources to make that happen, because people need to feel empowered, they need to be invested in, in order to be put in a place where they can help to guide some of these processes. So that couldn't, you know, look like formal oversight bodies or commissions consisting of residents from these identified communities, which, you know, is something that we can work with you all on moving forward, and, you know, we would be delighted to work with you on something like that. I wanted to just touch a little bit on these food action plans. Supervisor Serna, I know that you've asked us for a little more clarity on what that would look like. So they're often, you know, throughout the state, as well as the country, we've seen these food system assessment and action plan efforts to really, you know, holistically look at our food system and the opportunities and the strengths as well, when we talk about looking, creating jobs, and trying to steward a better environment. And there tends to be sort of a pattern, or not, these three major themes that emerge from these food action plans, which look at addressing the root causes of food insecurity, as I said, creating fair opportunity, economic opportunity for all in the food system, and ensuring a clean environment. And I want to just quickly highlight the Santa Barbara County Food Action Plan. It was an effort which was chaired by two county supervisors, and they received funding from multiple foundation partners, such as the, could I have just like an extra minute, potentially?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. And they're funded by multiple foundation partners, such as, I won't name them off, but it was like three or four. And when we look at like what the community engagement looked like for an effort like this, they did a lot of key informant interviews around 35, they did big, you know, three big community listening sessions, and they broke off into sort of thematic working groups and with residents as part of those working groups. So it was like a whole structure of community engagement. And this is just specific to like what a food action plan could achieve, and then sort of build that momentum and the partnerships needed to really address some of the issues within the food system, to vitalize economically the food system. So just to give you an idea of what that might look like, and I'd like to see something really similar happen for the environmental justice element, sort of as a whole, in terms of how we engage communities. So right now, what we really need from you is a commitment to work as allies and partners to environmental justice communities. We need you as electeds to embrace a culture of community engagement and collaboration with community leaders, specifically to address environmental justice and food access. I also want to make sure that I uplift and support other comments submitted by Sacramento Act, the SAC Tenants Union, NAACP, and others. And again, really appreciate your support on this.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, is it Brenda Ruiz? I apologize, because it's difficult to read the first name.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Vice Chair Serna. First of all, I want, as President of the Sacramento Food Policy Council, I want to stand a thank you to all planning staff for all of your hard work. They were, all the community meetings that they conducted, both at the pop-up events and at the CPAC meetings, were very well attended, and we look forward to working with you more in the future. I also want to thank all of the supervisors for taking the one-on-one meetings with us in the last couple of weeks. I also want to take this time to draw attention to the November 15th letter that was sent to all staff and boards. There are specific recommendations, particularly to implementation, and we look forward to working with staff on realizing those recommendations. And I think Supervisor Natoli pointed out, in all his wisdom, that there will be lots of funding needed for this, and we anticipate that all departments and staff will be very conscientious in putting into their staff budgets FTE time for dedicating to EJ discussions and serving on those special select committees or the different leadership panels that they will be forming, hopefully, in conjunction with the community. So our ask of you guys as the elected leaders is to make sure that they're including enough staffing time and enough support for EJ, so it isn't something that gets wedged in another meeting in a 12-hour day. So we hope that you guys can give them that support, and we know that you guys have a budget discussion beginning in the new year. We'd also recommend more than one stakeholder, more than one annual stakeholder meeting, and I think on the front end, we'll need to do a series of those now that it'll be adopted. Obviously, we support adoption of this, of this EJ amendment in the Phase 2. And I think the first phase will be more continuing on educate, more continuing education on what it is that was just passed, what does adoption mean, and what, and so that first set of discussions might be more onboarding on what this could look like. And then subsequent meetings, and I think in our recommendations, we recommended four annual, which is a big lift. The measurables will be important, and we look forward to partnering with staff and, as well as more individual conversations with you guys on what that can look like. I'm really excited. I think this is going to be great for us, and we're one of the few counties that will be adopting the first-ever food element in the EJ, in their EJ commitments. So congratulations. Hopefully, you'll pass this, and we're excited for what's in future for Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Bailey.
My name's Christine Bailey, and I'm with the Sacramento Act Environmental Justice Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and thank you to county staff for the open, transparent process and their commitment to increasing community engagement. Sacramento Act is a nonpartisan, multi-faith, multiracial grassroots organization representing 60,000 families in Sacramento. Regarding environmental justice, in West Darn Arcade, we have spoken with about 150 residents, worked with county staff to extend their online survey to about 180 people, held a listening session, and discussed these issues with stakeholders. We sent you a letter, and I'd like to speak to a couple of our recommendations. First, we strongly support updating plans for environmental justice communities, whether it's, we don't know whether it should be a community plan, or a specific plan, or a community objectives plan, or, we don't know the exact one, but it should incorporate economic development, affordable housing strategies, and multimodal transportation. Some investment of community resources would be needed to do this, but this could be leverage to get a large return on investment, because these plans would show specifically what these communities need and make us much more competitive for the many state and regional funds available for disadvantaged and underserved communities. We think this is an opportunity to actually hit a triple with this kind of community planning. A good environmental justice community plan can look just like a good community plan to address climate change. Such plans can address affordable housing, environmental justice, and climate change as, at the same time, it looks at economic development in the community. Second, we strongly support amending the county code to establish business licenses for convenience markets, and the community members have told us in the past, they in the county wanted to deny building, let another liquor store a convenience market, only to have the state step in and override. When we met with residents of West Darn Arcade, their top priority was enough affordable, safe, and sanitary housing and eviction issues. We've made some comments in our letter, and we look forward to addressing these issues in the housing element in 2020. We also look forward to working out the important implementation issues. I know Matthew is starting to think of some ideas regarding how we could structure that, because it's kind of complicated. A lot of people and things are involved, and I, we support Brenda Ruiz's recommendation to fund staff to work on these environmental justice issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Here, our final speaker is Mr. Frederick Gale.
Frederick Gale, 7336 Hurlong Way, North Highlands, a resident approximately 50 years, and I wasn't prepared for this, but I feel like I'm on the Flying Dutchman.
Flying Dutchman?
Yes, the Flying Dutchman.
Okay.
And this seemed to be an American dilemma, also, Grommer doll, but I didn't realize I was as poor, disadvantaged as what I see in this report. And as for the CPAC, I have no contact in some of these other presentations that are supposed to have been made. I'm not aware of it, and I thought I was. I've been active in the community for as long as I've been here, school boards, water district, fire department, et cetera. But I would like for you to not rush to judgment so fast. Just aware of this, I didn't expect to come into this, but I live in North Highlands, 7336 Hurlowe for the last 50 years. And I would like to have some prepared and have a lot of time to go through this, some of the acronyms I'm not aware of, even if I was a mechanic, engineering, and all that kind of stuff I did at McCloud, procurement analysts, et cetera. But I appreciate that I'm aware that I'm in such a terrible neighborhood now after all these years. I thought I had a pretty reasonable place, but thank you very much. But I hope that we can put it back on another agenda so maybe more people can get involved. Of course, I'm not aware of any of the people I see who are speaking, but that doesn't mean anything, and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Gale.
Of course.
Okay, that includes our public testimony. I have some questions for staff, they're procedural primarily in nature. And I'm not sure who wants to address the questions, but, and it kind of dovetails nicely after our last speaker. What is, is there an urgency that we have to finalize this today because of some clock that's fast expiring?
The only, I wouldn't say there's any urgency per se. We do have, we have met the letter of the law in adopting Phase One. Our goal in adopting Phase Two was to get this obviously adopted so we can try to move forward with some of the important issues that some of these folks have spoken about in implementation. In terms of a timeline, there's, I think we're only bound by the timing of the general plan round.
Okay. And then my other question was, because I don't know that I heard it in the presentation, staff presentation, anytime that a new element is being introduced to a general plan, whether it's a voluntary element or a mandatory element, there's, there's two principal exercises involved. There's one to make sure that you have, harkening back to planning school vertical consistency and horizontal consistency. So you have consistency between the elements in the, the plan document itself, and you have consistency with its brethren documents, the zoning code and whatnot that have to legally be in consistency with the general plan. I know that the recommended action is noting the other elements and how they've been amended and incorporate the intent of, of this newly, new, newly introduced element. But have we really gone through, do you feel very confident that we've gone through to make sure that those other equally important planning documents are now adequately referencing this, you know, greater, this bigger general plan to include consideration for environmental justice?
I would say yes, we are confident in that, to the extent that some of the policies or implementation measures speak to amending the zoning code, for example, as one potential pathway. There is work to be done to implement. Our challenge is identifying those subsequent steps without a clear definitive action by the board on either support or not supporting proposed policies and implementation measures.
All right. Supervisor Frost?
Yes, Leanne, you mentioned that this would position us for funding opportunities. Can you describe what some of those funding opportunities are and what the money would go toward?
Sure. Well, the one that Todd Smith referenced in the presentation was a grant that we've successfully received and are just getting the money now to do a re-envision West Arden Arcade planning effort. So we are just about to embark on that, and that had an environmental justice community component. I, I actually recall, don't recall which department, I want to say it was the Ag Commissioner spoke the other day, I could be misspeaking slightly, but they had used, they were applying for a grant, and the adoption of our first phase environmental justice element and the inclusion of environmental justice into that grant helped them be successful in that grant. That was by another department completely outside of the planning realm. So we do see that showing up in a variety of ways through the state funding, and we think there are a lot more grant opportunities ahead given the adoption of this element.
Thank you.
Are there questions of staff?
Yeah. Just quickly, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of information contained in the report, and I think what I found very interesting beyond, obviously, data from state or federal or other local sources was respondent comments, you know, and they came in through a variety of portals to, from community meetings to the survey to the pop-ups and so forth. And I think that in and of itself is a, a good gauge of, you know, what's on people's minds, and obviously there are topical areas that were, you know, prompters that, that helped people to focus a bit. My comment is then, and I think in my briefing yesterday, I want to be sure that on that list of, to your point just a moment ago, you know, the Ag Commissioner, make sure that the UC Extension Services are included because again, they have programs that address, you know, gardening and food preserving, and certainly have, you know, programs for youth for the 4H and such. I just think it's, it's important to make sure they're a part of the conversation right from the get-go. I guess what I wanted to, to ask about though, you know, you cover a variety of areas of importance, and I guess many of them are contained in state law. With implementation, is there a, a priority then for implementation, and or how's that going to be sorted out? Is that what the work we're going to do with the community is to, you know, some of these are, you know, using the analogy of low-hanging fruit, obviously, or things that could be done that can encourage, they fall in the policy framework, others require, you know, private sector and or the nonprofit community to be partners when it comes to some of the community health and so forth. But what I think about streets and conditions of blight, if that's the case, and such, so would we expect that with some annual report or even more frequently in, in early years that we get a chance to kind of mark progress in some way so we know beyond what you bring to this board, but, you know, that community framework in which we're going to be operating? So?
So I would say there's probably two ways to think about the priorities for implementation. One, in my mind, is the internal education component where we have to educate staff at all levels about what this means for how we do business in the county. The second part is the external where we have to engage, as, as we, everyone heard, community engagement is an ongoing thing, it's not going away, and it can't, it shouldn't. We need to hear from the community what their identified priorities are and focus on those on an annual basis. One of the challenges that you're probably familiar with is we don't want to get spread too thin such that we can't achieve anything. We want to have demonstrated progress on an annual basis, both to the communities that we serve and to the decision makers here. So I think it depends on those priorities that we hear from the community and whether there are co-benefits in certain implementation measures or specific programs or projects that can achieve those, the desired outcomes that are identified in the legislation of reducing the negative health effects and turning into a positive outcome.
I would just, maybe just kind of in a brief historical context, but I would, you know, compliment the planning departments, only this board over, you know, the past number of years, albeit state legislate, state legislation obviously interrupts or short-circuits some of the efforts at the local level, they, you know, they give us broad mandates and tell us, you know, you need to develop a plan, and then we look to implementation in some of these areas, and we become a bit stymied. But I want to just, in, in, in two relevant areas where certainly planning staff and this board, I think through direction, and obviously this involves county executive and law enforcement and planning and, and some of our other entities, one being that this board early on and has continued to, and I think even taken attempts to look at it more broadly when it comes to, you know, ABC licenses and the letters of public convenience and necessity, we struck the word necessity, we do it for public convenience, but we go through a very thorough process and have required that for many years and retained that decision right here at the board level. It hasn't been delegated to someone in some department and/or given some administrative, you know, delegation. It's been retained here, and there has been any number of occasions for any number of reasons, but some of them that certainly fit within the environmental justice category, whether that was stated or not, is relates to proximity to, you know, certain areas of concentration for young people or other gatherings, a constant, you know, the concentration, calls for services relates to other activity, whether it be criminal or nuisance activity. And I just think that's been longstanding, and I know the planning department certainly along with the county executive's office and others have been a part of that and have brought us good information, and we've had many discussions for many hours in these chambers. Another one I just wanted to call attention to, and again, it may be small, but I think it's certainly built into the, you know, food policy, food access piece of this and that, you know, it's been some years ago, and I think I recall when we marked the first one, we're actually a part of the conditional use permit process we required, some fresh foods be available in addition to what you might otherwise find in a convenience store. And I think we've had a discussion here at the board, and again, in subsequent discussions it may be required, but oftentimes it's now being volunteered because I think people hopefully recognize some consumer sentiment, but also I think the fact is that, you know, beyond those convenience items, you know, whether it be chips and sodas or candy bars and then other things that they build into the matrix of their business plan, is that there needs to be some access. And I, and I talked with some of the folks from the Food Policy Council representatives, you know, how it's displayed, where it's at in the store and so forth, and recognizing there may be some spoilage, but the idea is to have that available to folks that may come in and patronize those particular premises. And so, you know, there's a lot of else embedded here, but I just want to compliment, because again, I look, certainly looking at you, Leanne, but I know that, you know, planning staff, different levels over the years have, you know, worked on that and brought to this board, obviously, for consideration and approval, and sometimes on an individual basis, sometimes more broadly on a policy basis. And I think the work that's reflected here is, you know, a good Phase Two, but, you know, obviously a lot of work is here, it doesn't all follow the planning department by any means, but I find it encouraging and certainly thank the community for their engagement and support, and I'm sure they'll be, you know, prodding all of us to, you know, to do more, do it faster, but I think this is, you know, certainly a, a good place to be from the standpoint of what we want to reflect in our community, particularly in the unincorporated area. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for that. I was going to add, as another example of, in Todd's answer, he spoke to looking for opportunities when we're working on other items. Your board recently heard some potential changes to the community planning advisory councils. Obviously, we haven't completed that work yet, but buried in that myriad of that large package was a component that really came through from the environmental justice element process, which was not just notifying property owners, but also adding notification at the community planning advisory council level to tenants as well. So that is one small change I don't think we focused on in that hearing process, but that was also in that CPAC item as an example.
Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I wanted to ask if, and there's a number of questions that were asked in the various neighborhoods, and I'm sure you have, you're letting the various departments know that might engage in these activities, you know, what, what the public is saying, but I wanted to make sure the Sheriff's Department was notified too. I see a lot of comments in North Highlands and 95842, New Fodell Farms, about not feeling safe, and it's a, there's a great deal of comments there, and I wanted to make, I think, maybe a meeting with the North Area Commander would be appropriate.
Absolutely. I didn't mention it as part of my presentation, but we actually had staff from the Sheriff's Department serving on the Environmental Justice Advisory Committee, so.
Okay.
But absolutely, a follow-up is in order.
Do you know that it went from the committee people to the boss?
That I will follow up on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, again, want to thank everyone who took time out of their busy schedules to be here to testify in person, and certainly those that also did likewise in writing to petition the board on this important matter. This for me is a milestone moment because this is an important, not just an important exercise to go through, but is, I think, represents an important advancement in terms of how we, how we're going to be thoughtful in the future about how we plan our communities here in Sacramento County. As a member of the California Air Resources Board, I can tell you that environmental justice is a very, very critical part of our consideration in terms of almost any, anything and everything that we do, whether it be rulemaking or otherwise implementing important legislation when it comes to reducing greenhouse gases and criteria pollutants, but it's really good to see that we're going to have another tool in the toolbox to, to help us really gauge and guide our ability to be thoughtful in terms of the future of Sacramento County. So with that, I believe we are now ready to entertain a motion.
I'd move both Items 59 and 60 and the general plan pieces of that, including any other recommendations on Item 60.
Chair will second. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Great, thank you.
Now you have your county executive comments.
No comments.
Okay. Any board comments?
I have an adjournment.
Okay, I know we have another one as well, so if there's no comments, then we'll, we'll take Supervisor Peters' adjournment first and then Supervisor Natola's. If you could please exit chambers as quietly as you can, we still have a tail end of a board meeting. Appreciate that.
Okay, I would like us to, today, to adjourn in memory of Robert A. Ryan Jr. On Sunday, December 15th, our former county council, Robert Ryan, passed away. For many of us, he was the sage, profoundly known for his wisdom, judgment, and experience. Unlike many lawyers who sometimes act like ancient oracles dispensing ambiguous or obscure advice, Bob Ryan did not. His advice was concise and to the point. Many times after a long question from one of us, he would say yes or no. There was, we didn't get the long lectures back.
Not too many maybes either.
Yeah, no maybes in there. It was yes or no, can't do it, yeah. He was a graduate of Stanford Law School and received his undergraduate degree from the University of Notre Dame, and he was a big fan of the Notre Dame football team, I recall. He retired from county service in 2012, and for many of us, his retirement represented the end of an era. Not only had he been county council, he was also interim county executive for a period. He was, in my view, the gold standard for city attorneys and county councils. Something lesser known about Bob is that when he, that he is, was an award-winning artist. He painted still life, landscapes, figures, and more contemporary works in oils, and his work has been shown nationally. He began painting, we had a, after he had a bicycle accident and his mobility was limited for the better part of a year, and he fell in love with it, and he got formal instruction here in the United States as well in Europe. And after his retirement, he pursued painting full, full-time. He was Sacramento County's true Renaissance man. If you want to see his art, I'd say look at RobertRyanFineArt.com, there's amazing work there. He had around 30 juried shows. He was a quick study, I guess you would call that. He just started it six, seven years ago. He survived by his wife, Michelle Bach, and I'd like the board to adjourn today in memory of Robert Arthur Ryan Jr.
Yep. I want to also do an adjournment, but just would mention, I would thank Susan for her thoughtful comments and just note that, you know, again, all my years, certainly on this board, but prior to, because he served as county council, I think going back to 90, 92 was when he first, huh?
94.
94 was when, yeah, and, but was with the office, and as Susan said, he was just, you know, he was a go-to person, and I can't think of how many times over the years that, you know, referenced him as just someone who you could go to as a board member, but certainly we as a board, and he served this county very, very well, and, you know, that kind of innate talent that he was able to bring out in, in retirement with the painting is just, you know, fabulous for him, but certainly I was very saddened to hear the news. I know this community will, will miss Bob, and certainly sends our regards to Michelle. I wanted to also then, in addition to the adjournment for Robert Ryan, to also note another community leader who passed away just a bit before Thanksgiving, November 23rd, and that was Lynn Robey. Lynn Robey was former city councilwoman for the City of Sacramento, served from 1979 to 1982, but she was a, very much a part of a core group of folks that I think in the, you know, mid 1970s and on through to certainly many decades, you know, came to- you know, mid-1970s and on through to certainly many decades, you know, came to, you know, civic life and served in elected capacities. I know a very good friend of hers obviously served on this board, Isla Collin, Mary Ann Ruden, and others who served in different capacities in the city and county in many ways. And Lynn was a, by profession, a nurse, and as I said, and first elected, served then city council district eight in 1979. She had an inimitable giggle or laugh, you know, when something tickled her that, you know, you would, you would know it, and again, if you were in a room and knew, knew that, you could pick her out of the crowd very easily, but she also had, you know, a very strong commitment to neighborhood preservation, to neighborhood improvement. She represented, you know, Greenhaven Pocket area, some of the South Sacramento areas for many, many years, and worked very hard for, you know, community improvement, but also as some of those areas were growing, I know was very attentive to, you know, community development and making sure that good planning was reflected both in the neighborhood construct but also in the, in the, you know, business districts in, in the city of Sacramento. She also served for a quarter century on the board directors of what was then known as Sacramento Emergency Housing and now Next Move Sacramento, and leaves behind her husband, who again, in his right, has served this community very honorably as well, Ron Robey, who is Superior Court Judge, and together they had two children, Todd and Melissa. But I just would note that I think her love and concern for this community were, you know, revealed certainly in her service as a member of the city council, but I know that long after she left the elected office, she continued to be involved in community life in so many ways, and I consider her certainly a good friend and certainly a good friend of this community, and I know that, again, her loss and her passing is felt by many, many in the community, and she leaves a very strong imprint in her work in elected capacity, but obviously just her community involvement over many decades in this community. And so, you know, again, I would just say our hearts and thoughts and prayers go out to, to, to Ron and to the rest of the family, and we thank Lynn for her service, and certainly we'll remember her always in the landscape, and certainly in some of the accomplishments that she, in working for better my community, she leaves behind.
Great, okay. Thank you, Supervisor Natale. So again, please let the record reflect that today, Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, this Board of Supervisors for the County of Sacramento will adjourn in respect and in reflection for the legacies of Robert Arthur Ryan Jr. and Lynn Robey. We adjourn.